This conference will now be recorded.
I'm really sorry that to my fellow commissioners that I'm not there in person. But I think for your safety, it's best if I'm here at home. I've come down with a bad cold. And so I'm barely starting to get over it. And I just thought it'd be best if I stayed home.
Thank you for that, Madam Chair.
So it's nine o'clock. Are we ready, Commissioners? Yes, great. Okay. So good morning. Once again, I would like to call to order the South County Board of County Commissioners' virtual meeting Wednesday, May 25, 2020. And for the record, it is nine o'clock. Call, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Fambro.
Present.
Commissioner Gaigos. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Vice Chair Brush.
Present.
Chair Vahill.
Present. A pledge of allegiance. May I ask, call upon Commissioner Fambro, would you please? Lead us. Commissioner Fambro.
Chief Justice Frum.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Good to hear that. And Commissioner O'Donnell, would you do us the honor? Salute the flag of New Mexico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Z symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Vice Chair, if I may call upon you, I don't know if we have any guests there that should announce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have our staff, we have and we also have our voting, early voting staff here. So just as a reminder, early voting is going on at the county building at eight to five. So but we do have, I don't know if Elsa and Antonio are considered guests, but thank you both for we appreciate you being here. We appreciate the work going into what we're about to see. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next, we have approval of agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Fambro, a second from Commissioner O'Donnell, to approve the agenda. Call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush.
Yes.
Chair Vahill.
Yes. Now we're on citizens concerned. So citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes. No action may be taken. And so I'd like to start with anyone that's on on the virtual meeting. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Can you please unmute yourself and speak up? Okay, seeing none. Vice Chair, would you please handle it from that side if there's anyone there?
I do not see anybody in the room, and Anisa is indicating we don't have anyone on the phone line. So thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, we're at Budget Matters. Session and review of the 2022-2023 fiscal year. And go ahead. We've got Billy Galselby-Hill and Antonio Frescas, interim co-finance directors.
Good morning, Chair Vahill, Commissioners. I'll start us off. Thank you, and I would like also to thank Antonio Frescas and Elsa Vahill for stepping in over the last couple of weeks. It's been a tremendous task, and we're here today. Also, for the departments listening, we will still be meeting with you in the month of June next week. We have by June 1st, we do need to submit the preliminary or interim budget to the Department of Finance Administration. That's what Mr. Frescas and Ms. Vahill will be working on from today till the next Wednesday to get that submitted and any changes to be made. And we're going to work hard for final budget, and we'll have a clean budget for final. And I would thank again Antonio and Elsa for taking on this task. And also, I'd like to thank Mrs. Santa Stevan from our treasurer. She's been a tremendous help to both Antonio and Elsa as well.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So what you have in front of you is the interim budget. To summarize it, the property tax, we had a revenue meeting. So as you know, the projections for property tax collected for the next fiscal year was 12 million points some, which is an increase from last year. That was kind of to basically, we use that projection to kind of justify the raises that were going in. As you can see, that that 10.3% was the increase due to the property taxes that should be coming in. We'll have a better view and a better idea of what the actual taxes were collected for you at the end of June to project for final budget. Expenditures, as you can see, did increase as well, being for the fact that we did increase all the salaries, along with that, the insurances, FICA, along with all that other stuff that went into the salary schedules. Medical insurance, this is 17%, but at in December, because they go by calendar year rather than fiscal year, we should see a drop in the insurance from the 17, or I think it's actually closer 19%, will drop down to nine from December. So that should should help a little bit with some of those projections as far as insurance. Major adjustments, like I said, was mostly salary schedules. The departments were provided their budget sheets late, which was like three months late. They should have been provided them in January. Whatever budget worksheets that we did receive from departments, we did go ahead and try to accommodate the departments with some of the requests they made. We didn't receive, like I said, budget sheets from all departments. The ones we did receive, we made some adjustments to those. Going further into final budget, like Brett said, we do still want to meet with departments, make sure that we're satisfying whatever needs or whatever they have coming up, see what we can do to work within their budgets. We really didn't have too many adjustments on the operating side, but we did take for the kind of the projections and estimates as far as revenue. We did take numbers from the March 31 ending Treasury report, which Paula provides us. If you look through it, you can see breakdowns of what the general fund looks like, the different departments. The last couple of pages is kind of your breakdown of the different departments as far as, you know, the different line items, as far as, you know, equipment, you know, contracts, whatever else they might have coming in. But there's a better breakdown in the back of the budget. And again, I would like to thank, you know, Paula. She did sit with me for the afternoon, helped me more as far as like the debt service and stuff. I wasn't, you know, I'm not completely familiar with that. So I appreciate Paula's help. Without her, I wouldn't have been able to basically complete that portion. Of course, me and Elsa were tirelessly on this, and whatever questions you may have, I guess we'll take them unless you have anything else to add. Elsa?
What I wanted to add is the sheets that we did not receive, a lot of them stayed flat, basically like last year's budget. We just kept them flat within those departments. Obviously, based on whatever bonds or revenues that we do get in, and we'll be working closely with Paula on that. If you look at the very last section on the back of the budget, which is the LG let me see, LGBMS report, you will see that we were able to actually balance out the preliminary budget right now with the numbers that we did get up to the end of March. Antonio worked really hard on this one. It was it was a little difficult due to we didn't know what was done on the previous year. So we were trying to figure out, you know, where some of these monies were put in, but then not taken out. So we were able to get all this set up and going. But if you look at the operating budget, the detail report on the LGBMS, it kind of breaks down everything per operating fund with the revenues, and it has pretty much all the numbers in there that kind of put it all together. I mean, all the little summaries in between. I don't know if the commission wishes for us to go through each budget in this packet, or if they just want to review it through the LGBMS site. I'm not sure. Okay.
You can do it either way. It matches either way.
So under the general fund revenues, you've got to have me know this one. Under the general fund revenues, you will notice all the franchise tax, the grocery receipts, property taxes, different fees from probate all the way down to the treasures, the sheriff, rental fees. Everything is included in there, including the small counties assistance. And the transfers in and the transfers out from prior year to this to the new interim budget, as well as the projected state required revenue is listed below.
So as you can see also that we do, we do have a cash reserve that kind of carries over from year to year in this in this one, being that it's unrestricted cash. So that balance just kind of builds from year to year. We kind of try our best to, you know, get as many expenditures as needed that we that balance doesn't keep building. Like, we want to make sure we're addressing the needs of the county. So like if and going further, I don't know, we're interim for now, but going forward, what I would like to do is kind of see why that cash balance is building so much. I would like to see more more needs being addressed by the county and in the different departments and kind of see, kind of work with directors and see kind of projections, see where they see the county in five years, rather than just kind of being reactive and, oh, well, this is the way we've done it for 10 years. Well, well, let's think differently. Let's think more of the future and getting more, rather than to build a cash balance that, you know, just keeps building from year to year. To me, that, you know, I don't know, that's further down the road. But as of now, we do have 3.7 estimated to be there by the end of this fiscal year as far as our reserves. That number may change because basically when we look at cash balances and and stuff, it's more of a projection of where we're at currently and kind of projecting what will come in at the end of the year. Final budget, we have to go by actuals, so we'll have a better picture for you guys for final for that one. The general fund is basically broken down into all the different departments that it supports. So if you go down, you see like the different ones as far as like probate, the sheriff, assessors, we support all pretty much all the departments throughout the county. I know that as you go further into the book, you'll see that there are certain taxes that go into other funds, like there's an assessor, like a percentage that goes into their own separate fund, one for the treasurer, one for the clerics. So they have their own separate funds as well, but the general fund does support them mostly in salaries and stuff to that effect.
You will notice that the salaries have increased as well as the benefits with taxes throughout the general fund, throughout the various departments. That was due to the longevity that was approved and passed, as well as the increase. So that's something that we also better work forward in the final budget to ensure that, you know, the monies continue to be there to continue for that longevity and any other future increases down the road.
Yeah, so this budget right here has already the 7.92% increase that's already built in here. The longevities that passed as well are built in here already. So those would carry into final budget, but those are those have already been updated into this one. So you'll see that's the biggest, like I said, the biggest adjustments you'll see is salaries and benefits and stuff. So let's look at the next fund. So the transfers in and the out is, I think the next sheet on the book. So there are transfers in here that we do every fiscal year to support other departments, like the road department, ADC, which we actually had to increase the transfer to ADC this year, being that that their budget is very slim. And with the increases to wages, we actually had to transfer more money from the general fund into into the detention funds. We increased it by with 250,000, I believe, to cover that increase that they had with their wages, with the insurance and all that stuff. So that did increase. We left we we transfer over 250,000 to EMS to also help with their some of their salaries and stuff. We left that the same. Senior Center, we left that one the same as well. I know there was discussions two meetings ago whether we were to increase it or not. We just kind of went with what was the same because we didn't hear one way or the other if it was going to increase or decrease. We left that the same. A lot of these other transfers are for some of the grant funded programs that we don't necessarily receive the money right away. So we have to put it upfront, and then we receive reimbursements afterwards. So we have to transfer money into those funds. Some of it, we do get transferred back. We did receive some some reimbursements and stuff, so we have to adjust for that. The corrections fund that I'm still not too sure about, I know it kind of goes in and comes out. I mean,
That actually impacts the detention.
Oh, okay. So it's probably like an admin fee or something, but.
It's fees that we receive that I found out that we do receive for the correction side of it, and they are being positive.
Right, those are fees. If if law enforcement cites somebody into municipal court, and we're holding somebody, as Judge Fambro knows, on a town of Taos, then we can build a town of Taos for that, but they have to be law enforcement has to bring him in and put him, cite him to municipal court. If they're cited into magistrate court, then we cover the cost of it.
And supposedly, we're going to be paid for state prisoners now. There was an appropriation in the last session, but if that happens, I don't know, it's your I wouldn't count on that.
Right, yeah.
We're supposed to.
Well, I know that was one of their biggest costs out of their contractual. We are paying a bunch of other counties the housing inmates because they're housing them for us. But that is, that's a huge expenditure that we have on our.
Once they're found guilty in district court and sent back to our facility, awaiting time to go to a state facility, they become a state prisoner, and the state is supposed to be paying. But in my seven and a half years, I don't think we've ever received anything. Have we, Brett?
No, we haven't. And Mr. Silva, Mr. Christian, Mr. Montana, we're just chomping at two months. And that was one of the discussions we brought up is we're still paying for these detainees, and they haven't moved on to sentencing, they're on to state corrections, and they're still housed here.
Because the state's line item on that was increased from 2.75 to 5 million.
Oh, wow.
And that was to try to pay back responsibilities. But like I said, Antonio, if you hold your breath, you'll turn blue and die. So.
I stop holding my breath on a lot of things. So the next fund going forward is the property valuation fund. Again, that's the taxes, property taxes coming in. We did, after that revenue meeting that we did sit in on, they projected. So it's 1,1296,000 to come in collected. Again, we won't know the exact number until fiscal year end. So for final budget, we'll have we'll have the accurate number for that one.
Antonio?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I, can I, Carleen?
Yeah.
I have a question. I don't I don't know if this is the right time, but since you're talking about property tax, 1.2 million, is that additional from last year? Or what is that number coming from? Where is that coming?
That was provided to me by by the actual assessor's office. And that's kind of, they looked at it as taxes already collected and kind of their projections on where it's going to end up. We had a revenue meeting, something like a month ago. Yeah, April, and that was the number that they kind of projected us to have.
Do you know if it was based on certified numbers to the state?
I don't know. Maybe Brett knows if.
Or Paula? Maybe Paula might be able to shed some light because she really does see a lot of what trends, what actually happens.
Yeah, Paula's going to take the question, what we were told. It's on new growth. Paula's going to take the question.
Thank you, Paula.
Sure. During this number, the number that, well, the one that Antonio's looking at now is a 203. This is the property valuation for the 1%, but on the actual property taxes, what it's actually only about a half a million in growth, because if you remember, last year, we had projected roughly 11.8 million, but then DFA told us to budget 11.3. So now with what was projected from the assessors, it looks like a million, but it's really half a million. Yeah, so that's where they're broke this. It's not a full, and it's based on their maintenance report with the yield, the new growth, all that on there. So what they provided to us, it looks like it's a $64 million increase between res and non-res. And this was prior to protests. So I don't know what they've certified to the state yet. I haven't seen any of that.
Okay.
I believe they don't have to do that until June.
Right, right. Okay, and that is taxable value that they, and I'm going to make an assumption it is, but it is taxable value, can I?
Yes. It's all it's that's 64 million is full value.
Okay, so are we budgeting? Are we are we playing it safe and going with last year's? Or are we going with their projected new numbers on in this budget?
In this budget, they have the projected.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes, what is the collection rate using this year?
We're using the same 91 and a half percent.
91.5?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Paula, one more question for you. You might want to stand there. So thus far, last year's collection of property tax, were we on cue with what we thought we were going to collect? And or do we collect more? Because we played it safe last year, right, with the numbers?
Yes. Talking about current where we're at.
Yeah, current, yes, excuse me, yes, current.
We're on track to hit the 11.3, and we're going to go above, I'd like to go above that.
Got it. Good.
So, Madam Chair, am I to understand we do not yet have the prop this year's numbers for property valuations? They're not in this packet?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And fellow Commissioners, just so you all know, so typically at this time, as Paula has indicated, the protested amounts aren't in front of us, but the month of April is when property owners come in and protest. And so the assessor should know by now what's under protest and can can extract out those numbers for safety, right? Because we can't count on that protest being won. So I know that they don't report it typically to the state until June, but they should have those numbers in their possession. We might invite our county assessor to come forward and share some of those, share those numbers with us in an upcoming meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would concur with that. If we could ask our manager, the assessor, come to the next.
Chair, she already took that upon herself.
Okay. I'm just concurring with that.
She would come at a future date.
Okay.
And I did call her myself, and I did invite her to to please share with us the maintenance plan and her projected numbers. And since we were hearing that they're bringing in some additional monies, I think she needs to be commended for that. But I'd like to to hear the breakdown and see where that's coming from.
Okay, so then the next fund, unless there's other, any other questions regarding the property taxes? Okay, so the next one we're looking at is the Public Works Fund. They do receive a transfer in from the from the general fund, about $500,000. I left that flat. Being that there there is a couple of projects that are coming up, and again, their their salaries and that increased as well. So that kind of supports that increase on that side. Their expenditures pretty much stayed the same. I know that we did reduce one of them, but we're going to have to go back probably before final because it was the maintenance grounds and railways. Jason did submit his worksheet, so we reviewed those. Made some adjustments right to that one. But overall, that budget pretty much stayed the same, with only those increased due to salaries and stuff. State EMS fund, so your ambulances. They also receive a transfer in from from the general fund, $250,000 to support them as well. Again, most of it went to their salaries and increases medical and all the other stuff that goes along with it. Their budgets also remained flat. Chris also submitted all his sheets, so we we made his adjustments or whatever he asked for that were reasonable. So his stayed pretty flat. E911, so we actually increased their their projected income, because I know that last year they did it at 1.2 million. We increased it to 1.4 again to support their increases to wages and everything else as well. Me and Elsa already presented to their board their interim budget. They had a meeting, they accepted it, so theirs is approved and ready to go at the at the 1.4.
Just to note, there are some contracts that are increasing. They increase throughout the year. So one in particular is like an annual maintenance that we have for Motorola. It seems to increase close to 5,000 to 10,000 a year. So right now, I mean, this last year, we paid about 33,000. This next year, we're projecting about 44,000. I mean, all these contracts include from your medical director to your annual maintenance to the contracts that take care of the repeater sites. So that particular line item is increasing due to last year, they kind of did a flat budget, but they didn't incorporate a lot of a lot of the money into that maintenance contract line item, which we had to do a lot of bars in order to pay up all the bills. So this is why you'll see the number a little bit higher under maintenance contracts due to there is a slight increase in some of those fees.
And again, they have a heavy cash balance as well. So going forward, I would like to look into how that tax is collected and the restrictions on it, because I feel like this cash balance is just building, building, building. And that cash balance, they can only use it for one-time purchases, which doesn't make sense to me. It should be part of their operating, again, to expand E911, make sure they have what they need over there. So again, going forward, me and Elsa will kind of look at that. I don't know how the taxes adopted and stuff, but to me, going into just a cash balance, they can only use the one-time cost doesn't make sense to me. So going forward, we'll look into that as well.
And Madam Chair, Antonio and Elsa, I appreciate your comments on this, and this might be something that's too in the weeds, but it just was something that, looking through this, it made me wonder. I see nothing under equipment and machinery, and every once in a while, you hear about the consoles over there. Like, is that do we need more consoles?
Those things always go out. Like, it's just a where. Those things always go out, like it's just a wear item because they're on it so much. So that money stays in there because if one does go down, the price is like 60 to 70,000 dollars to replace one, so that's amazing why.
That's exactly what I was asking you about, but I'm not sure I saw.
Those are usually grant items.
Okay, okay.
You say grant items.
That answers my, that answers my question, thank you.
You guys have just taken office. We're, we're commissioners-elect. That was the last time we got a grant, and we got three consoles at that time.
That exactly answers my question of why there was.
Yeah, because they're pretty pricey, that's.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So we have that farm and range fund. That one just stayed flat, so I'm not, I'm not even sure who expenses from that one.
That really wasn't legalized at all this last year, so we just left it flat and continued on into this year for the farming range. I know that's utilized a lot probably there at the Ag Center side. Usually to buy like pest control or buy, like last time we bought some shoots too to help with, with other things in, in the Ag Center. But that was when the last person was there through the ministry, that last director. I haven't seen any purchases come through as of.
This last fiscal year, we didn't see any expenditures out of that by now.
Could I, Madam Chair, if I could just point out, that fund can also be used for roadwork. Under far, under the Taylor Grazing Act, that is an allowable expense.
So that, that fund is there, it just hasn't been utilized lately, so, but we kept.
Something to think about, yeah.
Yeah.
So then, then going on to the next one is the fire protection fund. You can see they pretty much receive the, the same monies from this, from the state and the federal through their allowance. All the districts are basically put into this one fund, so it all funnels into this one report. So you're getting all 13 districts into this budget here. Again, Mikey submitted all his sheets. He got, he actually met with all his chiefs, got, got what their needs were. So we, we adjusted his budget and increased it where it needed to be. There were certain districts that are trying to save up like for fire engines, stuff like that, so we put those into, built those into their budgets. His, like I said, his revenues pretty much stay the same. He's, he's been getting, you know, grants here that we add, add to their budgets here and there, but it's pretty consistent. So his expenditures basically match his revenue going into this fund, so it zeros out. The next one, the law enforcement protection fund. So this one, I believe goes, this is his overtime fund, so it's a 298?
No, no, no. This is the one for equipment and vehicles. The sheriff needed licenses for vehicles, for purchase of vehicles and some of the equipment, including body armor. Obviously rifles, guns.
Oh, because that other one goes in too.
It's equipment only.
Yeah, so the LEPF right now balanced out with what's in there. I don't know if the projected, let me see.
It's about the same.
The, the projected amount's about the same, so we kept that one pretty flat as well to have it in there for any equipment or any other vehicles to help supplement or equip the vehicles that we did get in for the sheriff's department. And I know we'll be working closely with him on the final in terms of the LEPF, the 298 and the sheriffs. He's just been so overwhelmed obviously with the fires and so forth, so we barely touched base with him, but we did, friends reached out to him to let him know we'll be discussing more detail with him for the final, to make sure he has his needs met.
You should see a significant increase in this next fiscal year because of the change in the funding for this. So that is coming in your future.
Oh, cool. More money is better. Okay, so the next one is the lodgers tax fund. This fund I'm not too familiar with. I know the clerk sandals the lodgers tax at this point. I know there's an ordinance passed that finance is gonna receive this. We're gonna have to work next fiscal year to transition that, learn their procedures and stuff upstairs. In preparation for that, I already changed one of our job descriptions upstairs to handle lodgers tax. And I'll be working with that person, being that I was that person at the time when I worked there. So I am familiar with some of the processes. We just have to get, work together and get with that. But we left the lodgers tax fund basically flat. Again, that's a fund that we need to become more familiar with, so.
And Antonio and Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. This, with the collection of lodgers tax on short-term rentals, should we be leaving this flat? And this might be more a question for our manager or for Madam Clerk. Should we, I know we can't project what that might be, but that is a change going forward.
Right, for, for now, we would have to keep it flat because we don't know what, what that data would look like.
Okay, okay. And have we started to, have we started to collect on those vacation properties yet?
I don't believe so, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, and, and again, we'll have actuals in that for final budget. This is just like a projection, so that's why we left it flat. And then, like I say, we'll, we'll, we'll get with the, with Val and Anna and see how that whole process works and stuff.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Chair, under the lodgers tax contract, you've got almost 250, I believe. That has to do with promotional nonprofits supplying, but I, I trust that money will be accessed soon.
Chair, we still need to come up with a grant process. And until things settle down into the new employee starts, then after we work on final budget, we can start, we're looking at a grant process.
Okay, I just know we've got nonprofits that could use this money for promotion in September, like for the high road. And so I'm hoping they'll, we'll see this money utilized.
There's not the capacity right now to work on it, so the folks I've talked to, I told them, bear with us. And by the end of June, we should have greater capacity to work on these tasks.
And then, Madam Chair, is it the county clerk will still put out these requests for proposals, or is that gonna go through finance?
It's gonna go through finance. The way the commission changed it, it's gonna go through finance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on lodgers tax? Recreation fund, so again, this one. This one, we actually lessen the projected revenue on this one.
We actually increased this, even though we haven't had anybody in that position, I think for over a year, we did project or put in the increased salaries with all the taxes and the, and the benefits at this point, that's the only increase in there. Otherwise, it pretty much stayed, we reduced some of them in order to compensate for that, but it pretty much stayed flat. It, it did get reduced quite a bit, only because a lot of the, again, the wages and so forth. I don't know when they plan on putting out to hire for this one, this, this particular individual, I think takes care of the Filimon Sanchez Park and does all the work out there. But right now, I, I know it's a struggle to get people in the door, so I'm not sure if facilities is still looking at putting someone in there or not. But we just kept the salaries on board still.
We're paying the prairie dogs.
Right, yeah. Don't even get me started on the, on the Filimon Sanchez field.
Madam Chair, I have a question. We had talked, the commission had talked about getting artificial turf on those fields and looking into replacing the lights to reduce our electricity costs. I'd like a report on that. Not now, but keep that in mind if this budget needs to go up to add for the artificial turf and the lights. We've been asking about this for several years now. I want to see that artificial turf in to move the prairie dogs out. I don't think they'll want to eat the artificial turf.
It worked in Angel Fire, by the way. They, they did the exact same thing, and prairie dogs now are paying customers.
And I'm biased on this subject because I, I haven't had to play softball in three years. So a lot of our, my team and other teams are itching, like now they have to travel out of, out of the county to play. Angel Fire, Espanola, and, and to me, this Filimon Sanchez was a good way for adults to release stuff after work. And now, you know, we don't have that anymore. So going forward, like I say, this, maybe I'm biased, but yeah, those fields are, are a mess.
Yeah. And Madam Chair and Antonio, I don't think you're biased. That's what the park is for, right? That's what the park is for, so it should be able to be used.
Yeah, so, so yeah, I'm all for turf and whatever.
And I, I had a related question, but I'm sure O'Donnell, if you are still having one based on.
Well, just a comment that, again, we've been asking that this artificial turf get put in. It's, those fields are an economic driver for us. And I understand we've had a continual shortage in public facilities, but I really want to see the bids get this done. It's too late now for June's softball tournaments. It's really unfortunate. But I, you know, I want to see this, I really want to see this done. This is important. Thank you.
To respond to that, Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, we have Mr. Suazo does have some price codes for it. We're looking for grant monies. We've asked Kit Carson for help on the electrical side. They're also looking for grant monies for the electrical. We're looking for, for money for the turf. Mr. Silva, myself did meet with Mr. Silva and Mr. Valdez regarding this project. And Mr. Valdez and Mr. Dino Silver are conveying what the county is doing to their softball leagues and coaches. We understand it's an economic driver. Once, once this is, put this on Jason Silva's plate, that this is gonna be his project, when we have the capacity to work on it again. Pre-fires, we have already been with Mr. Valdez and himself, Dino.
And, thank you, Brent, and thank you, Chair, and Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have, I have a question on a different.
So I just want to point out that I don't think we need to keep waiting for grants. I think we need to move some of the money into the free, from the 399 into the turf, to pay for the turf. If we can't find any, I, I don't want to see that as an excuse.
Vice Chair, did you want to say something? And I can't see any of you, so I can't tell when you want to talk, but it, it seems to be moving really nice and smooth. But I think Mark wanted to say something. Commissioner Gallegos?
I, and I, I did as well, Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't see, yeah.
I just, I agree. Commissioner O'Donnell said something there about using some of the, can we use our lodgers tax money to get these fields up and running? What we're doing is we're waiting and waiting and waiting for grant monies to come around, and we have money that that lodgers tax will put people in those hotel rooms. It will create more money for us, so let's quit waiting around, grab some of that lodgers tax. Maybe some of those nonprofits don't get any money, but at the end of the day, we're still losing out on our facilities in the way of us making money. And I think it's important that we just start spending some of that stuff instead of waiting for grants to come around from somebody else. Kit Carson doesn't want to see us go to LED lighting or solar power because we pay thousands of dollars a month in the winter, in the softball season. So I'm all for finding ways to getting that money into, from the lodgers tax into that recreation fund, we get Filimon Sanchez Park board. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair, thank, thank you. And my, my question is actually about a different facility. And I, I see that the recreation fund isn't a large fund, and we're already talking about, based on what Commissioner Gallegos is saying, like using other funds to do some of what we want to do around recreation. But, and maybe this, Brent, this might be more a question for you. I know that there's still work to be done at the Ag Center. Does that, is that something that can also qualify as recreation or under lodgers tax, you know, completing a new building there, the kitchen and so on? Is, is that something that we could use either recreation fund or lodgers tax fund for? Or do we have other plans?
Yes, you can use lodgers tax for the Ag Center for the expansion. The sitting commission, the experienced commissioners will tell you, we did take out a loan for that. I don't, is the debt service still on it? So Ms. Santos Devon said there's still a cash balance. So we were, we bonded to do the improvements on the Ag Center in the past.
So we have.
And we had a small amount that we used at the, at the old county courthouse to get us started there.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, and thank you, Mr. Manager. So is, is that answer that we do have the money that we need to finish up the work at the Ag Center?
I, I would take it from a different fund versus the lodgers tax fund, unless we wanted to bond it against it. There, we'd be able to take it out of the reserves in my mind.
And I would like to add, so I'd like to see that be completed as well. I agree with everything that everyone is saying. We do need to finish that Ag Center as well as, I, I think very clear, we all agree that the, the park needs to be up and running. So I just wanted to add that to the comment.
Madam Chair, with all this talk, I think we need to get a contract project manager. We, we don't have the capacity to get these various projects done. We might have to hire someone to get all these various projects done because the current project manager is really overwhelmed with other projects. So I don't know if you can find it in the budget, but I mean, we can't get these projects done if we don't have someone supervising them. And we can't depend on the deputy county manager and the county manager to supervise these projects. So I'm really asking, find some money to, to hire a project manager for these particular funds, Ag Center, the turf, at Filimon Sanchez Park, whatever else we, we're gonna need more capacity to get the 3 million for the Pinyosco area building. We, if we don't get a project manager, then a lot of this money could get reauthorized. Thank you.
Anything further on the recreation fund? So intergovernmental grants. Again, we do have quite a few grants out there. Like I said, mostly the general fund, the 399, we transfer money into those funds as needed until we actually get reimbursement back from state, federal, or local grants. So this is kind of an overall snapshot of where we're at. With the grants, we will have a better picture of what's actually came in and that, some of these grants come in at the end of the year. So for, for final budget, you'll have a clear and accurate picture of what we've received, what we paid out. As of now, it's mostly just a, a projection. I know we received money as of like today for one of our grants. So going back into final, we'll have an accurate snapshot of what, where we're at with the grants. Senior Center Fund, so again, we do transfer in that 102,800 to support the senior program. That budget again is very tight, I think. Maybe looking forward into final budget, we might look at it actually increasing that amount. Their budget, like I said, is very tight, like to do bars and move money around has gotten pretty difficult. So maybe for final, that might be one of the adjustments we make is to actually add, add our, you know, our portion to the senior center. Because that budget is so tight.
It's, it's so tight in the areas of transportation, counties had to move funds to pay for that and actually pay from other funds. As well as the food cost has gone up obviously due to COVID, all the transportation costs, everything goes up, surcharges, that kind of thing. Also their utilities, also with the newer building, it's costing a lot more than the previous building. So the utilities have gone up too, including the propane as well. So I mean, we gotta factor in all those additional costs that we've been seeing go up and up and up every month on, when we do pay out an AP. So we're trying to figure out how to balance all that out with the monies at AAA and as well as. So we're trying to figure out how to balance all that out with the monies at AAA and as well as through the other funding that we do get on the federal side and how we're going to break it out. We just received notice on how much they are projecting. I don't have a letter right now, but we did just receive an email and the projection of what AAA and the state is actually going to be giving into the senior program. And we're going to have to work that into this fund as well. And we're closely with John and Shona on that.
Okay, so the H cap fund. This one, again, Zach did submit his budget worksheets as well. The increases, again, salaries, the same as the other ones. Did, you worked with that fund. Did he increase any of his contracts or?
No, that was a decrease under the professional services. Because they do utilize some of those funds for some of their programs that they have in place. But a majority of the, a majority of these funds stayed flat. I need to sit with Zach Moore on this. It was just kind of like I say, a quick and dirty with him when he gave us his sheets. So it's something I need to work further with him in terms of the interim budget as well. As you noticed, it was adjusted from 2021, 2022. It actually did go down about $200,000 in terms of what's in place now in March. But the salaries, there were quite a bit of increases as well. And that's kind of why some of these other areas in the operating have to be reduced a little bit in that aspect to keep up with that.
To answer your question, Commissioner Vihil, the money that you're looking for is in that $759,947. Commissioner Vihil is asking telepathically regarding money for detox, because we've been in conversation over the last few days. So anticipating that question from Commissioner Vihil.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next fund moving on is the County Hospital Fund. Again, this is a tax that we collect, Paul, am I correct?
It was a mill levy.
Okay, so after this year, it's. Okay, so what, just that one? So the Hospital Fund was a mill levy tax that since has not been renewed or whatever. So the cash balance is actually the $900,000 that transferred, we're going to have to remove because we no longer receive that tax. So that's, that's going to have to be an adjustment that we're going to have to make before final budget. Final fire exercise tax, the 222. This is another tax that the fire districts receive, more funding for the, for the 13 districts that Mikey has. And a portion of it actually gets transferred into EMS as well from, from this fund. Again, you'll notice, this one doesn't have salaries and stuff, but this is more of their operating budget. Another budget that they can use for equipment, for even purchase of fire engines, supplies, and other stuff they, they need for their districts. Again, Mikey did an excellent job of meeting with his chiefs and got us all the, all the budget sheets.
This would be nice for a legislative change to allow for salaries and benefits. So if you speak to legislators, having the ability to, Commissioner Fambro has advocated for this in the past. This would be nice to be able to pay salaries and benefits out of here.
Well, and going forward too, like I said, I've been watching the past commission meetings. And if you did want to have, you know, a full-time fire staff, that would be the fund, just if you could persuade them to utilize for those positions. And going forward.
And then just, also, this is a county-only tax. So this is not collected in any of the municipalities. So this is just was generated in the county limits.
Okay, so DWI Fund, again, they're, they're a lot like the senior program where they receive funds from the state. They do have their own funding that comes from fees that they charge for, what is it for? Well, like when somebody pays when they need treatment or whatever, they, they receive some of those fees as well.
They're also, you know, they, they get distribution fees as well as our self-sufficient number grant. Of course, the increase will be in contracts or other services, just depending on what grants or what funds we get in throughout the year for DWI, especially for the Rio Grande ATP contract, which is helps a lot, especially with all the clients that they do receive. I know there's a lot more services being provided through Rio Grande ATP to help these individuals continue to be sober. So, but as you can see, we only budgeted it in about $64,000. But I do anticipate a little bit more than that to come in for that contract or those type of contract services under DWI. But until we move forward with, with all the paperwork and that, I'm not too sure as to what will be coming in. It comes in, obviously, every quarter. And by mid-year, we'll know if we'll have like a full-fledged budget. So there may be an increase down the road. You'll be seeing one of us in front of you to increase that budget, depending on the funding that does come in the door. They do anticipate a little bit of a more increase according to Mr. Rodello. So we do anticipate a little bit more funding to come in DWI. Right now, I know, we did increase all the salaries and benefits. They do, I think, have maybe one or two positions still open that still need to be filled at this point in time. So we got to keep that in mind as well, the salaries. They look a little bit lower, not too much, and a little bit higher in some areas. But again, we're still trying to recruit people to come work.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, under this DWI Fund, DWI Detox Grant, DFA of $96,000? If we could just get a report on what they're using that money for? I assume they're contracting with detox facilities to send people. But if you could just make a note and have us, give us an update on the DWI Fund of $96,000?
And we currently do have, have Elaine Miera who reconciles all their, their expenditures and, and all their grants and stuff. So she does have an accurate report as of probably to the date, because she's very detail-oriented. And so she does an excellent job of, of managing that grant. She works very well with Johnny and, and who's the other guy with DFA? So, so yes, I can, I can give you a very accurate report as far as the DWI.
So I have a question for Madam Chair, Vice Chair, our county manager. In the DFA recommendations, it calls for a freeze on, recommended, recommended freeze on all current vacant positions. Implementing an immediate freeze on all current vacant employee positions, excluding health and public safety, as well as increases to employee salaries, excluding union contractual obligations. So how do you rectify what DFA is recommending with what we're doing? And like reference to vacancies in various departments?
Madam Chair, if I may, and I think that that's, that caught my eye too, Commissioner O'Donnell. But that is under the note that if we're experiencing, quote, financial slash budgetary challenges, that's a step, that's what they recommend if the county is experiencing challenges, financial challenges.
Right. And then there was another, there was another correspondence, it's not in that memo. And I think you probably got it, Antonio, that they were basically taking, they wanted, they said, we're taking off the handcuffs for the COVID pandemic. I don't know how it was worded. I don't know if you saw that.
And I would, Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Donnell, I would actually just take this moment to say that I think that, you know, the budget's a reflection of our priorities, right? And the priorities I would love to see reflected in here are kind of the, the opposite of that. Like we need to fill our vacant positions and even add positions that are keeping us back. To your point about the construction project manager, that to me would be a priority across departments. Do we have the people we need? And related to that, is there enough budgeted for training those people? So those would in fact be my priorities throughout every department.
Commissioners, and I agree, that was just a, you know, a note. And it is very specific to we're facing financial budget challenges, and we have yet to hear that we are. And so I would like to echo Vice Chair as saying, I think we need to do the opposite unless our team tells us different. So I think we need to proceed filling those positions.
It was tough because it was split across pages, so it was hard to see that those two things belong together.
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Okay, so the clerk recording fee and filing fund. So this is, this is a fee that's collected for the clerks to use for their, some of their expenditures as well, transportation, supplies, whatever's needed. They didn't really touch their budget last year. Again, this is a fund that they, they can use for whatever expenditures that they need on their end. But that is a separate fee that they collect for the clerks. Detention Fund. So again, like, like the rest of the funds that we've already discussed prior, their biggest increases were, again, wages, salaries, medical. We did have to increase our, our transfer, because we transferred out 2.3 million from the general fund to help support them. We did have to increase that to 2.55, just because of the salary increases and stuff. I did cut some of, some of their budgets to kind of balance it out, because I didn't feel like, you know, to take the general fund and give them like a million dollars, rather, they had some funds where they were carrying over. Like, I think at this point, they even had like $90,000 still on some of their funds. So I reduced some of those to kind of balance it out. Going forward to final budget, once I get an accurate picture as to what the actual cash balance is, where our expenditures are, then we'll make adjustments. Maybe we can put back some of that money they had in those line items again.
Do note, I want the commission to do note that I'm hoping here soon, in either the next special meeting or the next regular meeting, we'll be awarding an RFP for the medical services for the inmates. So there may be some more discussion, I assume, with the commission and the county manager in terms of funding. Because it appears that it may cost us a little bit more in terms of this contract versus what we're paying currently right now for medical care. Also, to anticipate a little bit more on the food side as well. I know right now we've been working closely with Summit in negotiating that contract and trying to keep the costs within the budget amounts. But again, like I say, costs have been going up, not just the gas that's driving it up, but surcharges and everything else. So I just wanted to give food for thought to the commission, just anticipate probably a little bit a higher transfer in amount, possibly for those contracts that are coming up.
And thank you, Ms. Vihil. And Chair Vihil, if I could ask a question, is that somehow what you just described also related to, there's a pretty significant decrease in the line item for care of prisoners, like 40%?
Yeah, again, when I looked at that line item, it was, it did have a significant cash balance as of March 31st, so I deplaced it from there. But, yeah, but like I said, we'll have a better, because we did have to pay for those out-of-state ones. We haven't received a lot of invoices for that. So when we receive that at the end of this fiscal year, I'll have a better picture of it. I'm assuming that's probably going to go back up.
Thank you.
That'll probably be one of them.
Thank you.
And right now, they're, they're a little bit in the rear with the billing. So it's, it's a little low in terms of the expenditures from March. We still have to pay maybe about two, maybe three months' worth of invoices still. So, you know, and then of course December, we didn't have computers, so some of us have, you know, some of the bills are pulled behind. But I know Antonio's working diligently on that and getting all those bills paid right now. So you will see a little bit of a rise in the increase. Yes.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair. The contract you're referencing, is that up for renewal? Are we going to place it out for RFP to find another provider for the medical?
Commissioner O'Donnell, it's already been out. It's now in the process where evaluation is being completed. And it will be presented for approval for work based on staff recommendation, hopefully here within either the special meeting or the next regular meeting. Kind of inundated with this and several other job duties. And, and then as well as with the fires and everything going on, it's been hard to get the cats wrangled in, so to speak, for the evaluation. So finally got it done. But this will be a brand-new contract, because it's a professional services, they're only allowed four years, four years and no more.
Great. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, I really would like attention paid to the treatment of heroin addicts in the jail. Our current provider does not do that. I know there's issues, but I think it's cruel that people come in with heroin addiction and have to cold turkey. I want to see that. I want to see more mental health added to that. And I don't know what's in the RFP. It's just, those, those are my concerns with the new, whoever you choose. And we have to approve. I really want to see that in those proposals and what they're going to do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so the next one's the County Educational GRT Fund. So this one, it does look like we're projecting 1.9, which seems high to me. I think we just, we pulled this from last, the final budget, what was in there last year. So we're probably going to have to adjust that one as well for final budget based on the actuals that come in. I know GRT is, is high, just based on food prices and stuff. But 1.9 is kind of a number that was for final budget that we pulled for this one. So again, for final budget, we'll have an accurate picture. I don't know if we pulled in 1.9, but it's going to be less than that.
I want to have the projections.
Okay.
RBC Capital gave us.
They gave it, we had the last meeting, so you would have a fairly close. But it's also going to change in six months because of whatever the remaining proceeds are, they have to add at the last, on the last date. So he's got both projected figures.
Oh, okay, perfect. Yeah, I kind of overdid it a little bit, but I, I mean, we've all shopped, so we know that's.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but our gross receipts are coming in outrageously high.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Paula, can, can you come up to the mic? I'm sorry. My apologies.
On this, this is what we're looking at, doing the additional one-year bond. And so we're projecting probably about $4.6 million that it's going to have by the time the year is over that it sunsets. So that's, but that's for the school districts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, GRT? Community Center Fund. So this one has a particularly small budget. This one pulls in from all the community centers. So this is basically the charges we charge for renting out the buildings. These are kind of their fees that we collected. It's a very small budget. It looks like we're estimated to collect about $15,000. Probably the cash, the cash balance is probably closer to it. Again, at the end of the year, we'll look at, I know, probably COVID had, you know, an impact on that. So for final budget, we'll have accurate numbers for that one. But it's a, it's a small budget that doesn't get very utilized, right? You didn't have any last year. You didn't have any last year. Okay, the Title III Forest Reserve Fund. This is a fund that funds the WUI Coordinator. I think you guys all know J.R. Logan. This fund basically pays for his salary and his.
We won't know, actually, right now, we only have the interim budget like at $8,513, but until the end of June, we won't know exactly how much funding will get in for Title III. We anticipate about the same amount that we got last year. But then again, I mean, I won't know until those funds come in at the end of the fiscal year.
Those funds actually came in yesterday.
Oh, did they?
Oh, see.
So that's our spend. So that is the 30,000 into the Title III. It was about 243,000 into the 204, into the roof.
Ah, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. So then our, our projection's accurate then.
Yes, it was 30,000.
Okay, so then the next one is the treasures fee. This, this is fees that the treasurer collects basically for admin fees, right? And. Yeah, and treasure fees. Again, they, they have this budget to support them, you know, with their supplies and contracts, computers or whatever they need. Again, this, this budget was pretty much left flat because there was still about the same cash balances from last fiscal years to be left at as is. Sheriff's Special Fund, so this is the one, the fund that I was, this is overtime fund. So he uses this in case, he utilizes all his overtime fund that the, because basically out of the 101, which we actually increased on his salary schedule, we were giving him about 130,000. We increased it to 150 out of the general fund, but he still manages to go over that. So this fund that, that he has where he collects, it's kind of like an enterprise fund. He collects certain fees or whatever that go into this fund to help in case he does expend his overtime fee from the general fund. So that's what he uses this fund for. And that one stayed flat. CDBG. That one we did get. We did get a couple of grants in for the historic courthouse. So we factored some of those in there. Again, this is one that we're not going to know because I know we did pay out some invoices for that project. So this will be an adjustment for final as well, once we receive final numbers after June. State Legislative Appropriate Funds. So this one here mainly covers your veteran cemetery, a lot of the money that we received in. That's why you see the $3 million we received. And it goes into this fund to help pay for all the construction and all that stuff that, and yeah, other contracts that, that basically are for the veterans cemetery.
This also includes any other projects, like purchase of vehicles for the sheriff's superman. If any of these appropriations come in, any of the appropriations that were approved for Taos County in terms of transfer and transfer out until we get those new appropriation grant agreements in. Then of course, this will also be changing or probably increasing at that point for those temporary transfers in order to get those projects or products purchased as soon as we can, obviously, because we don't want one of the, none of the monies reverted if we can help it. Definitely.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, I think we'll see this more than double.
Probably so.
And, and that brings me to just if our county manager can explain, you know, people say, oh, you've got such high reserves. Well, we need those reserves because these are reimbursable grants. And if our manager could explain that, why we have to keep our reserves high, if you could explain that.
Thank you, Chair Vehoe, Commissioner O'Donnell. Generally, we have the appropriations that we take temporary loans from the general fund to fund these projects. And then we also need to pay back the general fund for the temporary loan. Sometimes that does come out of the reserves or the 399 to pay for some of these capital projects. It will go into 399 next. But generally, it does come from the general fund and then we need to repay back those loans for the capital appropriations, such as the 3.2 million for the veteran cemetery that needs to get paid back.
Thank you. And Ms. Manager, the federal appropriations, where will this, is that going to be a separate category? What we are going to receive from Congresswoman for the courthouse and hopefully the detox?
Yeah, they'll be on a separate, separate funding. The detox, the 195,000 would be part of the capital appropriations. But any construction dollars would come out of a different account.
All right, so you'll add that to this budget. We have, we've got approval for the historic courthouse from.
Till final. Ms. Montoya was at last week, received the email from DFA of when, well, they didn't tell her when the monies are coming in, but it didn't make sense for El Saro Tonia to do work for funded budget for something that's not going to get expensed this fiscal year. So I told Ms. Montoya and she passed it on to you. For the final budget as an example, that's where we'll put in the piniasco money and the 195 for detox as an example, and the rest would be on final budget. They just haven't had the opportunity at this point to work on that.
And the Congresswoman's appropriation, are you saying that won't be in the budget? That'll carry over to the next.
It'll be in the final budget.
Okay, okay.
So if to create funded budget, they would come before the commission and, and get DFA resolution, then we have to send it to our DFA analyst. So this other way is writing it into the final budget eliminates that step. Plus, we also know that none of that money is going to be expensed at this point. It didn't make sense to come to you guys with 1.2 million dollar request for CDS funding. Plus, we haven't received none of those grant agreements or, other than the award amount, that's only knowledge that we have of it, but we've not received any paperwork on it.
That comes from the feds?
Yes, it's going to come.
And then DFA has to approve?
No.
No?
No, but we write it into the budget. The final, so wherever they decide to place it, there'll be a 1.2 million dollar line item in the budget and that will make it into final. So it'll come directly to us. The DFA's knowledge of it will be in the budget.
Thank you.
And kind of to piggyback off of that, what typically happens, like, you know how you receive funding, like in the middle of the year? So because it's not part of your budget, once we get approval from you guys or whatever, we send that to DFA, they approve it and then they include it as part of that, that budget. Yes, and then, then from there, then we take it and then we, we create the line item and then we, we ask Paula to transfer the money that we already received into that line item and then that's how we expense it. So that's, that's the process as far as receiving funds prior to.
So Madam Chair, that means the federal money is a direct grant that we don't have to reimburse? Or?
We're, we're not sure what percentages or anything like that, because we haven't received it.
I see. Okay.
Because there's some that have a match that then the county has to use all the reserves to basically match whatever they're going to provide us, 25% or whatever they decide. That's why it's also important to have our reserves because we, some of these grants we do have to match. So. Any questions? Okay, so capital fund, basically our 399 fund. So we do receive money that comes in from the PEL that goes into this fund. We also have, I think that's majority of it, right? It's from the PEL that goes into that. So what we use this fund for is like capital projects. We use it for buildings, maintenance, other contracts. Like if a fund, we feel like in a department is short or whatever, and we have the funds out of this fund, we use this fund to kind of supplement them.
This also incorporates the lease for all the equipment that we currently pay to Dell Financial for the sheriff's units. So that's also incorporated under the lease purchase. This is also some of the funding we utilize to purchase vehicles for various departments that do ask or need that include outdoor vehicles. Some of these funds are utilized for that as well, and as well as for roadways and bridges. This is also something we work closely with Deborah and Jason on on what each commissioner has for their districts. All those funds come from here as well, besides any other grants that we receive to get those roadways completed.
So can I ask a question, Madam, Madam Chair? And thank you guys for the explanation. Since this is mostly pilt money, I would just like to ask our team and my more experienced commissioners too. In the past, what has the pilt money primarily been allocated to?
Capital projects.
Oh, like.
Yeah, basically to the roads, to infrastructure, to woodworkers, other road equipment, dump trucks.
Sheriff's units.
Okay.
Sectors.
And that pretty much works the way we, we'd like it to?
Yes.
Yeah, because even though we think that it's.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Okay, so I know it used to be in the general fund, right? We kept it together, pilt money. And then at some point, we, I'm sorry, am I talking over someone?
No, you're good.
Okay. So it used to be in the general fund and then it got pulled out. Is there a particular reason we, we went with this, in this direction?
It was, it was the second year of my first term. We decided that was best when we started changing around getting, we upgraded a lot of our road equipment and stuff like that. And we decided that was an internal policy of the commissioners at that time that we would dedicate pilt to continuing that program.
Ah, okay. And do you guys agree it's, it's still beneficial to keep it like this?
I don't know where the funding would come for items of, of that magnitude, I guess, that, that happened every two or three years. I don't, I don't know where that money would come from. I mean, the GRT is not a for sure thing. Part of it is for the Chevron project, but you know, even that's going to go away, not in our lifetime, but here. But I don't know where else you would get funds of that amount to maintain those programs, Madam Chair.
Okay, and so just keeping it in the, if I understand you correctly, I think Commissioner Fabro for that explanation, so keeping it in the general fund was a little bit more, would you say? It could be used in other ways. And so putting it in this separate fund allows to monitor it and keep it very specific for those uses. Is that correct?
Yes. And if you're looking for revenue stream for something else that you wanted to use part of this, remember the half cent sunsets in six and a half months. So you've got that capacity that you can reallocate.
Great, Madam Chair. Also, I hope we see a breakdown of how the 399 is going to be used once we get the pilt money. You know, we know it's for, it's not just for roads. It's also various departments ask for this 399 for their capital purchases. So I want to see the 399 broken down in the, in the budget like it has been. This would be an opportunity where we could use this money for the turf, for the lights, for the ag center, completion of the kitchen. Depending on the commission approving that. So that's, we're going to need those numbers so we know what it's going to cost.
Paula did say there's still a balance. There's still funds in the ag center loan that we took up. Also, Paula, you're going to get the pilt like next week or the week after, correct? Yeah.
It comes in the week that we're at the annual conference for local charities. Is that everybody?
Madam Chair, do you, Paula, do you expect that to increase from the 1.939, 1.135 from last year? Do you think it's going to go up?
That I don't know. I believe they send an email to the manager and they'll, they'll know what it's.
Yeah, we don't see that until June.
But it will be 1.9 million, 399, 399?
It could be more, it could be less. We don't know.
It was, I think, the 1.9 has been the highest. Last year, the year before it was 1.8. And then I think Commissioner Fabro was fighting for it, it was a 1.6.
Just shy 1.7, yes.
Right. So it's, it's varied, it's gone up over the years, but it's varied.
But it would be safe to assume, I know assuming is wrong, but that it, we're going to see this pilt money increase a little bit this year. That, I mean, we're hoping.
Yes, looking at the pattern, it's always either gone up or it's like we should.
I don't have to, I don't know if we grew federal lands or something, but did we, did we grow some acres?
Oh, my goodness. Well, you'd think they'd give us more with what's going on. Let me ask you with that, since you brought that up. Can we use this for forest thinning money?
Technically, yes.
Technically, you could, okay. Provided we don't get more money from the state or other grants. I always thought the forest thinning money, we could somehow encourage locals to get into forest thinning business in addition to their current contractors. There's going to be such a huge demand for forest thinning restoration of the forests. And I hope we'll get more, you know, separate federal money. But in addition, if there's some way we can include the 399 in some model of forest thinning. I know we can't spend it for training like local contractors, but I really think we need to encourage our local people to get into this business. And also, when these fires break out, our local contractors need to get on the list so they can contribute with their grader's back hose. Because you do see a lot of companies coming in from California. And I think it's just important that the word gets out that our locals can access, can be part of these massive fires if they get on a contractor list. Thank you.
And Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Donnell, the great points. Thank you for, for reasoning all those. And I think that some of your questions around our local workforce for forest thinning and the federal, in particular, funding that's available for that work would be worth a conversation with our WUI Coordinator, J.R. Logan, because he really has his finger on, on what's happening there. So maybe, maybe as, if fingers crossed, knock on wood, the fires are kind of in a bit of a lull, maybe we can invite him in to talk about like the latest updates around that work. Since your points are well taken.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So what I'm hearing then is that budget for, we saw earlier, it's flat for Mr. Logan, might need to be increased to include training.
And that, that budget you're referring to, it's actually, it's Mr. Logan on the Title III, won't be doing that contract anymore. But he'll be coming out of the 399, so we haven't, we're financed on that yet. He's still currently doing. He's still currently doing the work, but.
Is there a reason for that switch?
He feels he's better off on, uh, on, uh, looking for federal monies and working that way versus, uh, doing the defensible space.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so the next couple of sheets are the Revenue Bond Debt Service, which is kind of like speaking Chinese to me. I did bring in Paula and thank God, uh, she tolerated me for an afternoon. So we, we went through it. Again, um, this was one side of the coin that I had real, pretty much no idea. And I appreciate Paula coming in and assisting me with this. Um, I still can't tell you if you have questions regarding the debt service. So if you do have questions, if I could ask Paula to come up and answer them. Because, yeah, in all honesty, this is, this is out of my, out of my realm.
Was there any questions on my debt service?
See, that is ECI, you are. Thank you, Paula. Okay, so then moving on to the Solid Waste Fund. So this is, um, this is again increases due to salaries. We did have to increase the, I believe, which I, no. So we're going to have to actually look at the other contractual services, um, going forward into final budget. We did, because they did have that heavy cash bounce, but I think that was because of transfer in. But we're going to have to relook at that, uh, being that, because Edward has been so shorthanded. We've actually been contracting with Waste Management, um, to pick up a lot of the transfer sites. So going into final, we're going to have to see if that's still going to be the case for next fiscal year. If that is the case, we're going to have to actually up that other contractual because of the rate they're charging us is.
It's high.
It's crazy.
And and of course, that line item also includes the tipping fees that we do pay.
To the town as well.
For the disposal of the trash.
So going forward, the final, well, when we get the final numbers and we see actually how much we've paid to Waste Management, again, that's probably going to have to be adjusted for final budget.
And and do we anticipate any, any change in, uh, picking up some additional people and going back to, um, maybe a more, um, kind of a typical, the way solid waste, I'm sorry, solid waste usually runs? Brent, can you possibly answer?
Madam Chair, we don't anticipate any changes currently to the way solid waste is run. We're still trying to fill those vacant positions that were being stretched thin. And is Antonio and Elsa can tell you it, uh, we're having to make budget adjustments to cover, uh, the cost for Waste Management, but we don't anticipate any changes right now.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could add to this, um, this 300,000 plus, it appears we're paying Waste Management. It's got to be paid. If we don't have workers, uh, you can't keep closing the Chomisaw transfer station, which don't have people pulling the bins. Also, I'd like to, for you to look at, um, money for a chipper, as a chipper for solid waste, given all the issues we're having with forest thinning.
And I believe Public Works currently does own.
Well, thank you, but I know, I know for the Title III funds, we had purchased one for solid waste several years ago. I think that's when Mr. Bellis was still here as Deputy County Manager. So are you asking for an additional?
I'm asking for an additional chipper. We, you know, it's just, we got Taos Canyon, watched Chipper Days. Vice Candido, you did a bunch of pulling debris. I got that issue up in Chomisaw. I'm just, it's just a request that in case our solid waste chipper goes down with the heavy use, that we, we need two, you know, we've asked at Carson, they can't help us, they're chipping. And let me just finish my train of thought here. I really appreciate Mr. Silva looking into raising our fees. As you know, we have not raised fees, we have no fees for recycling. We have not raised fees for bin rentals, hauling of private bins. And I appreciate Mr. Silva is looking into what has to be done. And it has to be a professional contract with a professional contractor who assesses our needs in solid waste, what equipment we need, what recycling equipment, how many bins, what we should be charging. We have not raised fees for 15 or plus years. It's unacceptable. You want to see this department grow, the only way we can do it is, uh, do it right. And that's first, as we've seen in our ordinance, you have to have a, um, study. The study has to recommend rates for everything. Our fees are, even our solid waste fees of 130 a year should be doubled if you compare it to other communities like Mountaineer. So this cannot be an arbitrary arbitrarily chosen amount of what we're charging for bins for private contractors, what we're charging for removing those bins. Um, and so I just want to thank Mr. Silva because I know he's working on it. And unfortunately, I won't be here for this, uh, when this gets, um, presented because it's going to take a while for the, whoever gets chosen to assess all our transfer stations, all our needs, all the equipment that we need. And we need a professional to do that. And I hope the commission, once this study comes out, that they won't say no to a rate increase because, uh, this department can't function the way it is right now. I'm sorry, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Can this trash?
If I may say, uh, yes, that is, uh, that's a, and the project that we're working on that would should be completed before the end of the year. So yes, that analysis will define that and support the ordinance that would raise the, the solid waste fee. And that's something that's desperately needed. You know, I don't think this thing has been increased in about 15 years, I think. So, so that is coming down the pipeline. That will support a lot of our shortcomings with that. But I do want to point out, uh, we have looked since the squall, uh, of identifying two different chippers to have another one in solid waste, but another one in Public Works. But due to the supply chain issues, uh, we're still, we're having issues with that. So it's not that we have kind of just, we've needed this since December, it's just, there's an issue. So it's just unfortunately, another COVID setback has, has halted our ability to be, but we're working through that. So just, uh, just wanted to let that know. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to take off because we have a, uh, a meeting with WWE specific on a project. But any, Brett will alert me of anything that is come, that is identified within the budget that we need to work on. So just let me know, give me some feedback and I will provide some feedback later this afternoon. But I'm going to be going to Ventero Road and looking at box covers, so thank you guys.
Thank you, and I'd like to add on that chipper, um, that I know that we often, um, take care of the areas that are far away. Areas, but I'd like to see if we could, you know, uh, bring in a chipper for in different locations as the people clean, you know, their yards and, and, um, and they're trying to get rid of all that brush. It'd be nice to be able to set up in different communities and, and offer that service. So I, I'd like for us to keep that in mind because I think, uh, you know, as individuals clean around their homes and try to get rid of that brush to, you know, certainly protect your homes from any fires around there, that would also be helpful. So, um, another chipper would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so moving on to the Taos Ambulance Fund, uh, this is EMS. Again, uh, increases to salary, um, insurances, um, their operating budget as far as equipment contracts, that all stayed flat. Well, transportation, which, let's see if we did adjust it, which is another thing that I didn't mention on all the other budgets. Transportation also had to be increased, uh, due to the increase of fuel charges. Whatever ones we didn't address during this interim budget, we'll make sure in preparation for final budget that we do make those increases as well because we did see a significant increase in, in the amount of fuel that, especially with diesel, the price of diesel is insane right now. So, um, Public Works was one of them that we had to significantly increase their budget. Of course, the sheriff's, um, EMS, I think, if we didn't build it in here, we'll adjust the transportation line item for that as well. Grocery seats tax held for others. Again, I'm not too familiar with, with this fund, I don't know. If Paula wants to speak on it, if you guys have any questions regarding.
This is just a list of where basically the fiscal agent, pass-through agency for Prado and via Taos Regional Transit. And that's basically what this is listing, what they collect and what we pay out, but it's just an in and out.
And there's a lot of them, and that's why when somebody tells you our GRT is too high, what we get is not. It's, there's so many, um, pass-throughs and, and tag-ons in our GRT system that it's, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, five people have already taken out by the time we get it.
Yeah.
Or even more. Thank you, Paula. Okay, so the next sheet is the actual budget recap sheet printed from LGBMS. So this is, this is actually what the county will be reporting to DFA. This is the report. As of right now, everything's balanced, it's ready to click submit. Alls we need is basically approval and for me to send that resolution attached to this, and we're good for the interim budget. The deadline to submit this to DFA is the 31st. And I know that's the meeting to approve this. So it's basically going to be is if you guys do adopt it that day, I'm going to have to get the resolution signed. That's going to have to be uploaded and then we submit to analysts. But this report shows you a breakdown of all the funds and where they get funneled into. And it, and it's a balanced budget. So we are submitting something that, that is likely going to be approved, so. Behind these sheets is more of a breakdown of your, of your transfers in and outs, your breakdown of your departments. And again, this is how DFA sees it, this is printed directly off their website. So this is the actual report, what it's going to look like when they view it.
So if there's any suggestions, obviously, that you can't think of today, do not hesitate to email, uh, Brent or Jason, um, so they can work with us and making sure we adjust the interim budget before we present it for approval on the 31st. If there's just minor changes, if the commission's happy with it at that point, then of course, per resolution, you can approve it on the 31st.
And again, I'd like, sorry, um, I would like to thank, um, Lupe Martinez. I did reach out to her a lot, she was very helpful, um, she honestly was processed. Paula, of course, without her, with the debt service side, um. Yeah, and Gina with the salary schedules, um, so I just wanted to thank them as well. It was a team effort. You give me more than three weeks and you'll get a better result. So, thank you guys.
Brent?
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Veale. Another thing logistically, uh, for, for everybody in the room, logistically, Commissioner Veale and Commissioner Brush are out of town on the 31st. They're only available at eight in the morning. So we would, uh, I guess we could start at eight o'clock or eight fifteen, give everybody that 15 minutes. And, uh, unless any, the commission anticipates any changes, there'll be some, maybe some cleanup that they'll work on, but there'll still be a balanced budget.
It would have to be at 8:00 AM because I have a procedure that day later.
Okay, and 8:00 AM, we'll be here at 7:45 to be ready.
And thank you, thank you for accommodating.
If we could do that as all online.
Sir, you mean on, this month or in June, I, I'm a little confused.
Tuesday, May 31st.
Since the deadline to submit is the next day.
So will, um, Madam Chair or Vice Chair, is one of you going to be available to sign off on their resolution that morning?
We will both, and thank you for accommodating us. We could, we could, um, Chair Veale, just go ahead and speak first, she could sign it electronically. We will be in, we were invited to go with the interim housing board connected to the project Moxie work to go meet with them in Durango. So we'll be, we'll be there dialing in from there.
Yeah, the sooner we can get that resolution signed, the sooner we can get recorded and get the other back to DFA.
Is, is electronic signature acceptable?
Electronic signature will be acceptable, and then we'll probably just keep it as simple as the chair and, and.
Yes, Vice Chair, Madam Chair, I have a question and comment if you could research Forest Service Dispatch. The contract in previous years has been 35,000. What happened was they had planned to move their operations to Albuquerque at Eagle Rock. That has fallen through. BLM pulled out of the 3 million they were going to appropriate to create a new dispatch in Albuquerque to consolidate everything. I want to see where that, what we can do to keep Forest Dispatch in our building up there. What's happening if we have to renew a contract with them? I don't want that shut down, I know they've been moving people out, but we need that. Forest Dispatch, BLM Dispatch to stay upstairs. And if it's not in the budget, I don't care, the, you know, if we give them a $20,000 contract. You know, I don't care what it is, it's just, it's important. We wrote them letters, they wrote us back and said, sorry, we're moving to Albuquerque. Well, then BLM pulled out, that whole project is a mess, it's not happening. So I want to make sure we have Forest Dispatch up here and they're operating. They have all that equipment in there, everything's hooked up. I, you know, I don't know who we have to talk to at BLM or Forest Service. The original contract was signed by the Forest Service. And, uh, I don't want to lose that upstairs for a lot of reasons. So if you, somebody could find out, I don't know if you need to put it back in the budget. Somebody's got to renegotiate that contract, it has expired, thank you.
And, and if I, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in right now. And, um, Commissioner Fabro said something that was really important, and that is that we have, I believe it's what, half a cent of, of a half a cent, am I saying that right? That we might be able to reallocate because we all need, know that we need, uh, some additional monies for, uh, safety, for the fire department EMS. So I think we need to seriously think about what we're going to do there, just want to make that comment. Second, I wanted to thank Elsa and Antonio and Paula and the team, basically, for filling the void and getting this, uh, these documents in front of us. Also grateful to Lupe for being there and to, uh, thank you also very much. We know you're working hard on getting this, uh, these numbers accurate and ready to go. So I, I just want to really express my, my gratitude. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Gallegos?
I, I think it's, uh, budgets are always, uh, tough to predict in the future. I think that there's a good base there, I know that things are going to change and the numbers are going to change as well. Four of our priorities are going to be, I think, as, uh, as we move forward as, as the commission. I would just say that, uh, let's do as much as we can to. I mean, it's our job to make sure we get what we need done. It's their job to make sure that they figure out how to get it done for us. A lot of this lead is by us taking the lead and not so much about, um, we just let finance know what we want and they figure out the numbers for us and, you know, we put, uh, we put the hammer down. So I think it's, it's good that we're starting with some base here, so appreciate it.
Commissioner Gallegos, I wanted to, thank you for that. But I also wanted to mention that Antonio said something really interesting. And I think that we need to really continue to think in that direction and look, looking at long-term and thinking about, you know, what we need in the future. And so Antonio, you know, I appreciate that comment and his forward thinking and how we need to approach budget going forward.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, thank you so much for Paul Antonio, Elsa for stepping up. I know it's been stressful, but I appreciate you doing a great job. And also want to publicly thank Lupe Martinez for answering your questions and helping us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell said it well. Just to the entire team, thank you so much for, I know it hasn't been easy, but you're getting us there. So thank you for all the extra work.
Great. Anything else, Commissioners? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, well, Madam Clerk, call for both please and
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair Beale?
Yes, and it's 10:51 for the record. Thank you. Do you all?